Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier. Commissioners Carolina Mejia and Commissioner Emily Claus on Zoom, and Commissioner Edwards will be joining us shortly. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder, and Clerk of the Board Amy Davis here. Public virtual attendance available on Thurston County YouTube channel. Have three hours to review several items. First up is review of the proposed agenda for this afternoon's board meeting. Start there, and that meeting will be called to order at 2:00 p.m. Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mejia. We will review and approve an agenda, and then there are two presentations scheduled. One is proclamation for Target Zero.
Yes, the Target Zero Program Manager for the county is representative from the prosecuting attorney's office, and she will be in attendance, along with a few of her community engagement partners and law enforcement partners.
Okay, any questions about that one? Next up is proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day.
Yes, Katie Strozick, Health and Social Services, and members of the opioid response task force will be in attendance to accept the proclamation this afternoon.
Okay, cool. Questions for Amy? All right, then we have proclamations. Yes, they're drafts are in our packets. Okay. Next up is opportunity for public to address the board, county managers update.
Nothing reported until this time, Chair.
Okay. There was a public comment that I wanted to follow up on, but maybe I'll bring it, I'll leave it for the end if we have time.
Okay.
From a couple of weeks ago.
Is there an email or?
No, this was from a, from a, a meeting where there was a gentleman was like.
About the property?
There was a property and a cul-de-sac and some compliance issues.
Yeah, we've done the research on that. Is that something you would like us to report out in the meeting, or we can just give you an update on, on what we've been able to find out from CPED?
Kind of up to the board. I mean, if, if it's somebody who actually came to the meeting, sometimes we, we report out during county manager update if there's something to report of use, or I mean, I'd just be curious to know where it all kind of stands, one way or the other. Doesn't have to be, I'll leave that to your discretion, but I think I'd like to know.
No, we can, at the end of the meeting, and one of the commissioners, we can cover that.
Okay.
And then we can make a determination if that'd be valuable to report out.
Perfect. Sounds good. Okay, consent agenda, we have A through H. First up, MOU for the governance and administration of preliminary budget process.
Let's see, do we have anyone from?
Summer is out today.
No, anyone from the auditors team that want, oh, there we go. Auditor Hall is here. Before I pass over to her, I just wanted to thank her and her team for amazing collaboration that's taking place. We have our TC Connect budget module that the teams are working together on, and then to put this MOU together, here they come, we see them now. Your team's coming in, Mary. Just wanted to thank them for their continued hard work and support. There's a lot going on. And Mary and I both believe that through teamwork, we'll be able to accomplish more together. So, Mary, I'd love to hand over to you now to talk about the MOU.
Sure. So, when we started putting this document together, there was a lot of collaboration back and forth between our office and at that time Nicole. So, it's been through, this MOU has been through several renditions with all the players having an opportunity to weigh in. And I think it's going to make the budget not only more efficient, but more transparent. It'll head off any potential allowability issues in the beginning and make sure that things are, by the way, that makes.
Did you say allowability issues?
Correct. For example, the Veterans Fund that was put in the budget to fund to assessor staffs was not an allowable cost. No matter how you went about it. So, you know, there, there are different ways to skin a cat, right? You can accomplish things in multiple ways. There are many, you know, streets that lead to Rome, or whatever they, however that saying goes. So, I think collaboration, what was that?
The saying is they all lead there. So, in that case, it doesn't matter how you skin the cat.
Yeah, okay. You got it. So, you know, I think it's going to make the decision-making cleaner. We'll have an opportunity to reach out to the state auditor and get their opinions on things that might be a little bit on the line. And, and why that's so important is when we get a response back from them that says, yeah, you can do it that way, and we're very good at phrasing the questions to ensure they're very specific, if then they come back in an audit and say, well, you know, we're not sure about that, we can give them that document and said, we, we cleared this with you. This is exactly what you told us was okay and how to do it. So.
Isn't that exactly what we tried?
We're going to be sharing the responsibilities. We're going to be, it's going to be more of a team approach. And I think approaching it from the budget perspective and the reporting and allowability perspective is really going to create a better budget. So, the challenges we have this year, however, is we have pushed the, the deadline back many times, and we're coming upon a statutory deadline. So, it's not going to be the perfect process this year. It's not going to be exactly how we imagine it to be, but we will get there. And I really appreciate Leonard's leadership and, you know, facilitating the discussions in a time when everybody is juggling many, many things with TC Connect. And I know Diana, I believe, is down there. Diana, do you want to comment on more of the, the details? And one of the things we weren't able to include that didn't make it on the agenda was an appendix that had been created a while ago. We just didn't get it in the AIS. So, apparently it can't be heard at this meeting, but that will come to you at a later date.
Good morning, Diana. So, what we did was kind of went back to the drawing board and went through best practices of GFOA, the state auditors, and MRSC, and what the roles and responsibilities are in your statute for the auditor's office, and what we are responsible for, and essentially providing accurate, timely information, research, whatever the Board of County Commissioners might, might need. The facilitation of the decision-making process is still with the board, but the ultimate goal is for all of us to work together to get published, transparent, great budget passed. It's a tough job. And so, it had been MOUs in the past that we worked together before the pandemic, and then during the pandemic, our MOU expired, and the lead staff in Robin's office and the lead staff in our office both left. And so, trying to get back together is what we're working on with different teams. So, is that the detail you'd like covered, Auditor Hall, or do you have more specific?
Right.
And so, any specific questions about any area of MOU? The approach that we took was having each statute and what the auditor's interpretation of it was, and we spent about three months with Nicole going through that. And so that we had an understanding of what is our part, what is your part, this is all our budget, and how can we help each other?
And our interpretation was also based on feedback from Karen Horlitz.
And Commissioner.
Following the MRSC.
I think the, the situation with this MOU is that unfortunately with staff departing, we don't have all the continuity of, we were talking about that yesterday, all their conversations, and with the timeframe of where things are at because of how the budget module of TC Connect has really diverted attention to work on that. There's some timeframes that we are getting, that are coming up upon us. It was our desire to try to advance this, but if there's any time needed for review, because I'm understanding that the board item was late, so it didn't even allow you to look at this last Tuesday. We want to be sensitive to your needs and time to review and dig into this.
So, I mean, if you guys have figured out that you've got an agreement, you can be following that agreement, right? Before the board has to put signature to paper. I mean, I, I would like a little more time to go through this, and I'd still like you to follow that what you, what you've figured out is the right way to do it. Nothing needs to change, but I just feel like this is a pretty big deal that's been, you know, contentious over the last year or two, and I haven't had a chance to review details of it. Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, same. This, you know, this is a big deal, as Commissioner Mensor said. I like to make sure that, you know, everything's touched several times and touched by us a couple of times before it's passed. I, I want, you know, I hope, or I want to try to ensure that, you know, this is a MOU that creates collaboration while also preserving autonomy, you know, of the, the commission and the budget team. I think that's important. You, you paraphrase, you stated that, and I appreciate that. But, you know, and I, you know, I kind of understand what you're saying about allowability, but I also like, I, like even the, even the bad ideas, I want to, I want to make sure that we're hearing about those too, so that there's an education piece. And, you know, like the, the whole, the way that went down with the, the Veterans Fund, if that would have just been, you know, there, there's probably a better way that could have gone down. But if it would have just been shot down and not explained, I think that would have been like a missed opportunity. So, you know, it, I, I just, I worry too much, I worry about gatekeeping a little bit of, of like information and bad, even bad ideas. And I know that that's been something that's been expressed on the board as we talk about the MOU and whose responsibilities are what, and kind of, you know, how things shake down.
So, the concept in this MOU is look for the auditor's office. We are going to provide with the budget team, the joint budget team, all change requests. And where we are starting is what we call baseline, that every program and service that you do today, what is the cost of business next year? And essentially, it is if nothing changed, this is how much it's going to cost us to continue business. And the forecast model already includes that. Then you would proceed with decision-making, and any research that you need or vetting, the pros and cons, or pluses or minuses, those decisions are yours. It's our job to help and assist to provide information. And if it is going to be a problem on the back end, that's why we want to invest the time and resources on the front end to get that coverage we need with the state auditors and the time, because a lot of times it's quick that you're trying to turn these ideas and decisions around, that we'll be providing more resources to assist with that so that you can make decisions.
Has there been talk about what like the division of labor looks like in this whole process? Because that sounds like a lot of additional work for the auditor's office, and it's, it's almost like removing responsibilities from the budget team's office and transferring those over.
We are supplementing, and we have teams, there are four teams, and when you say, are we working through this already? Two of the teams of the four are already completed their work so far. So, our call to budget team and our internal service rates team, they have already completed those tasks so far. So, two of the four. Some of the other teams, the joint budget development team and the fund balance team, they will still continue working. And the concept is a member of the commissioners team and the member, member of the auditor's team would work, depending on what the activity is, or it may be where the auditor's team takes this topic and the commissioners team takes this topic. Those team members' activities are some of the final details that we're working through, the logistics of new system, new people, new process.
And who shepherds that process? Who, who decides how tasks are divided up and whose responsibilities are what?
So, we have team leads on each side. Summer has been great to work with. I will say she has jumped in and taken this. She's been fantastic to work with so far. She has a lot on her plate.
Chair, we, we're happy to, it sounds like with the level of sensitivity that you mentioned, happy to pull this from the agenda so that we can bring this to a work session and have both teams prepare for that so that we can really engage procedurally with the board. Because understanding that even prior to me getting here, there's been some background, and we want to make sure that you are all updated prior to what you're.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Commissioner Mejia, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to kind of restate kind of where my colleagues are in terms of, I just need more time to review this.
Okay, thank you. I saw Commissioner, Auditor Hall saw your hand.
For some reason, it keeps putting my hand down. We, when we put this together, we really divided up based on statute, statutory duties outlined in RCW. So, it follows that very closely. And to comment on Commissioner Fournier's discussion about, you know, bringing those things that may not be allowable to the board, if you want to take the time for that, we can certainly make that happen. However, one of my duties as county auditor is that you, if there is a use of funds that is not legal, I am required to report that to the state auditor's office. So, I was happy that the Veterans Fund didn't get to that point, but we have to do that if there's any theft, loss of public funds. It's, yeah. So, I just want you to keep that in mind, and I will certainly give you the heads up. And, and, you know, I get a little passionate about those things if it's, if it's not allowable. But, yeah. And as far as the staffing goes, it is going to be a challenge. You know, when we put this process in place, or when this process was in place, which is how it was prior to Robin being on board, the commissioner's office had one budget person, and all of this duties were really done in, in the auditor's office and with teams located around the county. So, we've discussed that internally a lot. One time, we talked about the potential of, you know, since we are going to be taking on a major part of this budget, there's a position that's never been filled in the commissioner's office. Could that be moved to the auditor's office? With TC Connect, you know, we, like everybody else, are finding that while there are tremendous advantages to this system and a lot of power in the system, certain transactions do take longer. And of course, you know, departments and other offices might have one person that works in that system while the entire financial sys, financial services team works in that system. So, we really have yet to fully evaluate how this is going to change the workload. So, you know, want you to be aware of that. And we, I know things are tough, but financial services serves every single department in the county, you know, beginning at training on the new system and, you know, finishing up with the annual report and everything in between.
Chair, as mentioned, look forward to maybe taking, pulling this item, getting the board's direction, coming back with a work session. Because, you know, as county manager, I'm not in favor of transferring any positions, and so I think maybe we can, the budget team and the auditor's team can talk internally. We can make sure that we understand where each other is coming from and have more discussion about this.
And to answer your question, we currently have three people assigned to teams. We're looking for a fourth. And Darren, as the financial services manager, is responsible ultimately out of his division, and the point person in the auditor's office is Joe to make sure that the team, that we don't have meetings that we're not attending, to make sure someone is covering all of the meetings. And any requests from the commissioners that they need, that we'll make sure it's covered.
Okay, so we can, I'm sure we can talk a lot more about this this morning, but sounds, is there consensus to have this pulled off? Okay, I see thumbs here. Commissioner Mejia said yes. Commissioner Claus, okay to pull this off and have a work session to discuss it in more detail?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
So, we're good on that, and we'll.
Great. And then we'll add the appendix as well. We'll include that with what you're reviewing, because I think that's an important document as well. It talks about the structure.
Thank you, Auditor Hall.
That was the team member document. So, you'll see kind of who's working on what then.
We'll have some edits to that document.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to item 3B, Superior Court contract award for, for treatment services. Do we have Superior Court? I don't see a name there.
Sabrina may have had a, a court conflict.
Okay. This kind of fell into that same bucket last week. We didn't have anyone here. It's an item I've seen before, but at the same time, it's good to have some context, but.
Provide the context of the item.
Will they not be free even for?
It's a consent item, so we typically want to attend.
Yeah, go ahead and provide some context, and then we'll see if there's any questions. Our policy board.
This contract provides behavioral health treatment services to participants in the DUI drug court and family recovery court programs. Services provided under this contract are primarily funded by Medicaid or private insurance with funds identified in the contract for participants in the program. Funds in the contract also cover the costs of administration, actions of treatment, including data collection and reporting.
I know it's tough not having the, the author of the item.
I guess I'll look to my seatmates how they would like to handle this item.
Happy to pull this one and.
Is it time-sensitive, I guess is my question.
We don't know. The contract's July 1st, so we're already into it by a month or so.
If the board would like there to be a presenter, just to make sure that there's nothing being missed, again, we'd recommend pulling it. If we can bring it back and have them schedule someone to be here.
But then that's going to be two weeks.
I would like to move forward with, with it. I, I think it's pretty straightforward. And then a presenter can kind of give any information this afternoon and.
But there won't be a presenter because it's on consent.
Well, we can pull it out.
We can pull it off consent and ask someone to be here, but we don't know if anyone's going to be available.
I mean, we can let Superior Court know, let them know that it's either going to be a department item or it's going to be pulled.
Yeah, that's okay with me, I guess.
Actually, it would be okay with me if we would allow the county manager to, whomever from, from Superior Court to get a hold of the county. Just leave it alone. Let Superior Court talk with the county manager. If he gives us a thumbs up, then we can.
Just can always pull it at the beginning of.
We can always pull it at the last minute.
Me and I, in between, will touch base and get a report out. We can probably provide that in an email to you all.
And just, you know, just basic questions, like has it gone up? Is it, if so, why? You know, just.
Gotcha.
You know, just your simple, I know we've used this, this provider before, so I don't think that's a change. And then, you know, a little more detail on the funding sources that fill it through. I mean, Amy alluded to them, but, okay.
Chair, we're going to move, you're going to move on, right?
Yeah, I'm going to move on unless you.
Could I ask one question, and maybe Robin could answer it? We haven't had any vouchers coming through lately. Is it a hangup on this new computer system? And if so, are we running into time issues? Do we have sensitive issues on there?
My understanding, the, the, the report that needs to be delivered to you is still under review. So, in the new system. So, it is part of the challenge of the new system, and I don't think there's anything that is not holding up payments going out, and I don't think there's anything questionable that's getting paid.
Thank you. That's a good catch. I hadn't really thought about that. Okay, next up is 3C treasure item, sale of tax title property. We have private negotiation to Thurston County Public Works. Eric Sullivan, good night. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good. Pretty straightforward tax title property. This is located adjacent property next to Public Works Treatment Center. They put a bid in. It would facilitate any expansions or needs in the future. So, pretty straightforward. They will be putting in something in the future for the request, because I, I think they have to do a budget item on this. So, they meant to get it on today, but they, they're, they, they missed the cut. So, so ours is on first, and then if it goes through, they're going to have an agenda item probably in the next couple of weeks.
Questions for Eric?
Ready to go?
Nope, I hear none. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Item 3D is CPED set a joint public hearing with City of Lacey for the annexation in her local agreement.
As Jeremy comes up on this item, Amy, this is the item that we made adjustments to, right?
We did.
Do you want to go ahead and just verbally communicate those?
Yes, we just revised the motion. We removed the set time that was listed in the motion and added language to authorize myself to set the hearing time to provide a little bit of flexibility while we continue working with the City of Lacey to nail down the. to nail down the, um, actual agenda for that evening. Since this hearing is a part of their regular council meeting, we want to be sure that we're noticing the time appropriately and ironing out some logistics.
Okay, so it says seven o'clock on my agenda, but that's been changed to make it more, okay. Why don't you go ahead and talk about this one, Jeremy, and then we can.
Sure, absolutely. So this item is for the board to set a public hearing on a draft inter local agreement with the City of Lacey regarding the annexation of two unincorporated county islands north of Interstate five. This includes the Woodland Creek State's Red Ram Road Island and then two private inholding islands within the recently annexed Coolio Park, um, annexation that Lacey did recently. We are also working with the City of Lacey to finalize an open house on September nineteenth for all the affected residents. And we will also be doing a direct mail to those affected residents, notifying them of one, of the open house and two, of course, the opportunity to testify to the support of county commissioners and the City of Lacey City Council. For the notification for the public hearing and for the open house, we'll be publishing a notice, um, in two newspapers of record in Thurston County, both the Nisqually Valley News and the Olympian for four weeks in a row prior to the public hearing. So there should be sufficient notice for this public hearing for them to know what's going on in the neighborhood. We'll also be preparing an informational flyer on the annexation, what it means for the affected property owners financially, both on their tax levies and so on. So, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Jeremy? Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Next up is three E, which will, obviously these will all be moved up one because of the, um, change we made to the budget thing. But, uh, three E on the draft is emergency services, emergency medical services council bylaw revisions. Ben Miller, Todd, good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Ben.
Just, uh, just a brief review of last week. Uh, as a reminder, we did start, uh, the EMS council established a bylaw subcommittee to review any and all bylaw changes moving forward. Uh, we did review that bylaw committee makeup at our last meeting. Moving forward on May eighth, we did have an executive session for discussion, should the public want to review that executive session, or sorry, not executive session, Board of County Commissioners' work session on May eighth revolving around these additional changes. And on June twenty seventh of this year, uh, the Board of County, excuse me, the EMS council unanimously supported, uh, the proposed changes that are in front of the Board of County Commissioners for adoption. With that, I'd like to open it up for any questions.
I, I, I brought up at the last meeting that, uh, I had a little heartache with the, the loss of representation designated within, uh, I guess District Four. I, I, I still have concerns with that. Trying to figure out how I should, how to best address that, probably a conversation with you. And then I'm going to the, uh, Commissioners Association tonight. And so I'll, I'll probably speak with some of them tonight about that. So I would ask that this be pulled from the consent calendar and, uh, maybe placed on a, on a subsequent meeting, if that is okay with folks.
Is there any time sensitivity to the board's approval?
There is no specific time sensitivity to this. Um, we, we can pull and reach for a discussion.
I would support the vice chair's time to have those conversations.
Thank you.
Question to removing this item until a later meeting?
September third. I think we'll have the conversation with, uh, Commissioner Fornier, myself and, and Ben, and then we can go from there when we believe it's ready to come back. So, but yeah, the, the third is the next agenda. I'm sure that, uh, we can meet quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and let's go to what's three F on the draft agenda, which is human resources, resolution for changes to position control.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Ponte, HR Director. This item consists of three requests. And the first one is to add a new classification, uh, within the, uh, Community Planning and Economic Development Department. The title is Natural Resources Program Manager. This position will be paid from the mitigation program administration. It has no impact on the general fund. And the cost of the position in 2024 is eighty-three thousand. Uh, that includes pay and benefits. And in 2025, uh, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, also, uh, pay and benefits. Then second item is to extend the date of a deputy prosecuting, uh, position. This was, this is actually a correction. It was approved in Amendment One. Uh, we just didn't make it into the position control. Uh, it would extend the date from June thirtieth of 2024 to June thirtieth of 2025. And it is paid out of Blake Funds, so no general fund impacts there. And the, uh, final and third item is, um, to reclassify a public health and social services program manager to a senior level. Uh, that position is, uh, funded by the treatment sales tax and, uh, results in an increase of fourteen thousand, uh, per year at the top of the range. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this item.
Usually there would be, when it's, you're changing the dates, they'd be listed. I don't see that they're.
For item two?
Yes.
It changes the date, so it's, if you look on the second page, from June thirtieth of 2024 to June thirtieth of 2025. And that's also, um, listed in the resolution.
It's just, it's just not in the initial.
I think you're looking at the agenda and I'm actually looking at the agenda summary that contains additional.
Yeah, okay, so it's not in the agenda portion. I don't, normally it is. I don't, I don't, I'm not worried about it.
Okay, that we could have, we might have missed that.
I just, I just pointed out.
We can add the dates back in if that's something you've done in the past. Clark, would that be a change you can make?
Anything else on three F? Take HR, you're still up for three G and H? Uh, Public Works Resolution to reclassify a position.
Okay. Um, this request is based out of a vacancy, a senior office assistant position. Public Works took that opportunity to assess the, um, workload and the typical duties of the position. And they determined, uh, they requested a reclassification to administrative assistant one. Uh, HR has reviewed, um, and seen that it's justified. We've also worked with, this is a union position. We've also, uh, worked with the union on this. We've gotten, um, clearance from them. And so this position is, um, will move, it'll be a ten percent increase. It's not general fund and it'll be absorbed from the Public Works budget.
Questions on three G? Let's go to three H. Classification and compensation study, pay adjustments.
Okay, this request is based on, um, a direction that Human Resources received in March of, uh, twenty twenty-four of this year. When Segal conducted their compensation study, they found that there were a number, um, a handful of positions that were below in the market. I believe by about ten percent. We received direction on the union positions to negotiate, uh, compensation changes. Staff has been able to do that. We have reached agreement and this request is to approve those compensation changes. And there were two positions that were not represented. There are also included in this request. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this particular item.
And when would the, when that, when, when would that change take?
This, uh, would, will take effect September first of this year.
What's the, um, do you have your hand up? Go up, no, sorry. Do we know like what the aggregate cost is of the increases that were?
I don't have the number with me, but my recollection is it's a, under a hundred and eighty thousand for all of the, um, increases and when we adjust employee pay. So if there's an incumbent that's say at a range ten, step six, there's a process we go through to place them at the range eight and then the commensurate step. In the new step, in the new range, range and step.
So next year's budget cycle is where it's gonna. That'll be the full amount, right?
Correct. So then those adjustments will be made into the future budget.
So are we taking that into consideration as a new baseline? I guess that's what I wondered.
And I started, so I was starting the conversations with Nicole, uh, when she was here on the budget piece of it and more recently with Summer. So we'll be partnering, uh.
Yes, answer your question. If it's, if it's an adjustment and it goes up, if it's part of the general fund, yeah, I will set a new baseline.
We, we just need to keep track of.
All of those changes.
Yeah, all the changes, so we know how much that baseline is bumping up, because it's not just here, it's in a few other places as well.
And, and we recognize.
I mean, I'm not against, I want, I want people to be compensated properly.
And we recognize that. And that's even with the reclassifications, that's why we've been partnering with, um, budget, not just to look at what the impacts are today in, to the general fund, but what that looks like into the future. So that is a work in progress.
And that's, and the hundred, the hundred and eighty, they, you said, is that over just a year? Were, you weren't talking about the rest of this year?
Um, I would have to check with my compensation and benefits manager. I know that that's all been calculated.
Okay. Well, if we can, yeah.
And we'll have to have future conversations, the county manager and I and budget in terms of.
This will reduce the amount of ending fund balance by a certain amount in the end. For, for September on, September, October, November, December. And then next year's baseline will be affected. So I just wanna make sure we're considering things like this. When we're looking at something, we're gonna do a new program or decide to, uh, I don't know, buy a widget, whatever we're gonna do, we need to know that we've got this in the, this is an issue.
I agree, Commissioner. It's kind of the full cost of.
Right.
Changes, uh, programs, um, unit pressures that we need to bake into the equation.
And at some point, when we go into budget later on, we ought to have a dollar amount, an accumulative dollar amount that we've added so much, uh, during the course of the year to changes like this. They all need to be made so that we can at least know the dollar amount that goes along with that.
Sir, no, I'm thinking about something that you're, I don't know if this is kind of where you're going, but it makes me think about having that, having kind of a running total.
Yes.
Of all these things we do during the year, because then we get to the budget. And it's like, if we're tightening the screws a little bit on the budget, but we can sort of look back and say, well, we actually.
Already did this.
We already, we, yeah, we, you know, we, it was spread out over all these decisions and amendments and adjustments, but we did increase the budget by seven percent, general fund by seven percent. And that's why we're making decisions that we're making now here in the fall.
Right, and we can keep track of that. I think also to the reverse, policy of if a program is going to increase a general fund contribution or if an action is gonna increase general fund contribution, then the board wants to look at that separately. Because it's not happening at the budget time, it's happening in real time and then, you know.
So would it then be like referred to the budget team for a recommendation? Is that?
Yeah, we, it would have to go through as, uh, and that's, I think, as Summer gets her feet under her, um, with Robin's support and really appreciate Robin's support through this time with Summer. But as we get that forward, those are the kind of policy recommendations we bring to say, if we have to tighten the screws because the revenue's not coming in as high as it needs to, these decisions during the year need to be governed this way. And it doesn't mean that we don't have to, we, we wouldn't bring them to you for review. Would mean we would bring them with a recommendation based on the direction given. We don't recommend this and here's why, but you could still see it. We don't want that gatekeeping that you're talking about, Commissioner. We are not seeing the light of day on it, but we can bring it up. Because you may decide it's a worthwhile program. We know it's gonna move up, but we're willing to, to make that decision because it's tighter control.
And this is like, this, this one's kind of the opposite, right? It's the, it's the reverse where we did look at our budget situation and we said, you know, we've got to at least dress people that are ten percent off market or whatever.
Yes.
And so we, and so now, you know, we're seeing it months later and maybe the budget situation's not even as good, but we look back and it's like, that was the policy direction. I mean, not that we can't change it, but.
Right.
That was, I'm looking at that and remembering that conversation and thinking, it's kind of a decision we made.
Right.
You know, at that point, we're gonna adjust those ones that are really out of whack, because that's just, I mean, that's kind of basic.
And to your comment, that's what, for HR sometimes gets caught because directions given a few months and it takes them a while to work through all the traps.
Yeah.
With the unions. So then they come back several weeks later and they're working on something.
Months in this case.
Months. What I would say is when we're looking at doing that, Marie and I have talked a little bit and, um, with Summer and Robin, I think we can come up with an approach. We wanna try to look at things with, what's the authority level? Like how much are you willing to spend on something like this? So that as part of the decision making, she has some room to work. Because, for example, if we say, we'll go and fix some of these class and comp issues, it could be very expensive towards cost prohibitive, but they're doing all the work to then bring it back and then you're sticker shock. Rather to say, we wanna fix some of this stuff and we're comfortable. Of course, the budget team would be there to show you what, how it adjusts. We're comfortable with X budget number. And if it's gonna exceed that, then we may not be comfortable. That way they know what window they're trying to shoot for.
Yeah, yes. And I'm like, I'm try, and I'm, I'm very new to process here. And I'm like always trying to like nail down, well, what, what was the process? What is the process? And, you know, I, I think we're, we're, we all need to be careful of like assigning new monies to things until we have a better picture. But like, the process, like, just like the MOU earlier, like, in, and I know that I get told that, well, it's an AIS, but that's like not easy to access. You, I feel like you've gotta be a little more technically savvy to, and it doesn't sound like anybody's like in there jumping around. But I like seeing a sheet, right? And here's, here's my, you know, here's my proposal. And then in my agenda packet, there should be a sheet on top. And I know, I think it exists in AIS that says the trap lines that have been run. You know, hey, it's been through budget, then it went back to HR, then it went back to budget, then it went to the commissioner meeting, then the commissioners kicked it to, uh, whatever, you know, like, so that I know that what, you know, this, this ten percent increase has been vetted by the budget team and they've already, you know, reviewed its effects on, you know, the, the twenty twenty-five budget. But, you know what I'm saying? Is it, like, I know there's ways to do that, like I.
And the rationale you provided is part of, like, Amy, the appointed directors and I have a conversation we had about getting more time so that assistant county managers are also in the loop, finance team is in the loop as well. And that we're not rolling into the Tuesday review, things being finalized Friday lady afternoon. And the commissioner's not really having enough time, or even me having enough time, sink our teeth into it to understand.
Yeah.
When we do this, what, what are we doing? Effectively, we're trying to, we could pull things to give full context of the decision. When you do this, this is the ramifications.
I, I don't wanna assume that ideas have been vetted and be wrong, you know? Because I think they are, but I have no way to verify they are. And then, you know, like, well, that, like that, yeah, that MOU is the perfect example. Like, I don't know who's all touched that. And I, and it was.
And with that situation, I think we were, you know, trying to, knowing that we're, timeframes are, are tight and that staff turnover. But to your, to the, to the spirit of what you're saying, I agree a hundred percent. The more context we can provide the commissioners in advance notice, you know, we're balancing, right? Making sure we can move nimbly and quick, but also giving you context as to how the decisions are being made, especially when they touch budget, um, and what the ramifications are.
Yeah, yeah, if you slow down the process, you actually speed up the process most of the time. Because then it, it doesn't, it isn't left with other people guessing or, you know, wondering or wanting to do their own research.
I like that idea because we do, I mean, time passes and we do forget. And it's good to have, I like the checklist idea, you know. So, and that's part of what we're doing with the reclassification piece. And so we can certainly look at that anytime that we're looking at changes to compensation. It makes a lot of sense. It's transparent.
Would it be okay to remove this from consent and put it as a department item? I think this is pretty significant steps the board's doing. And I think a little bit more attention should be brought to it. That way Maria could explain that we're acting on, you know, the pay study and we're bringing employees into line with, you know, I don't know, I, I feel like that's pretty important.
It is. I think, I'll speak for Maria, the sensitivity is, in this environment, as she makes one move, others are saying, well, when?
Why not?
When is our turn?
Yeah.
So she's trying to balance because there is not an endless supply of funds to do this.
Wasn't there kind of an objective criteria of like a certain, you said ten percent? I don't know if that was a hard line or if it was about ten percent, but I mean, it wasn't just, we didn't pick winners and losers, right? I mean.
Well, that's how some folks feel. Objective then becomes in question. Yes, Maria believes it's objective. I believe it's objective. But, you know, there's a lot of points where our department heads, elected department heads, other folks in the organization, that, and, and I'm not, I don't disagree with them. There are needs everywhere. Just a matter of how do we prioritize those needs and identify what's important? I don't think there'd be any problem moving it to department items.
That's just a thought. I'm just not. I'm here, but I just, just a thought. But, and any other questions for Maria on adding G or H?
Just, thank you. I know that this has taken a lot of work and this was, I remember how excited I, I was when this whole ordeal started. I feel, feel a little different nowadays, but.
Thank you. I appreciate that acknowledgement. And I'll be here too if you decide to change it. And I appreciate the support and I think that we'll be having future discussions because there's still, you know, there's still a lot of requests that are pending. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Double back to three B because Sabrina Craig from Superior Court has joined us so we can hopefully address this item more thoroughly. Good morning, Sabrina. We were just hoping for a little context on this one since we didn't have you last week as, as well.
Good morning and thank you for hearing me this morning. This is our treatment services contract for the therapeutic court programs operated through Superior Court. This is how we provide all of the treatment for the DUI drug court and family recovery court programs. This is a fee per service contract. And the, the fee per service portion is funded through the criminal justice treatment account primarily for the DUI drug court participants who are not, do not have insurance or Medicaid. So the primary portion of the services are funded by Medicaid, but the secondary portion is funded by criminal justice treatment account. This is a new contract on the heels of an RFP that we just completed earlier this year for treatment services. What's different about this is we've added in some funds for our administrate, for the administrative services that they, that our treatment provider gives us, including the observation of all of our toxicology, again, for all of our programs. And they also provide all of the data and transfer that data to public health so that we can report on that, that contract for criminal justice treatment account that all the calculs with the state. So they do some, some work for us around that administrative portion. So we've added some, some funds there. So we're, we're asking the board approve this contract for the year and to subsequent renewals.
So with CJTA funding, I mean, is this in line with whatever the budgeted amount from CJTA? Because that's a different process and they would have allocated. Okay.
Yes. Yes. This, this is, this is in line with the funds that are allocated to Superior Court, DUI drug court with the CJTA funds.
Pierce County Alliance, do they serve our clients in Thurston County? I mean, I'm hoping our folks don't have to drive to Tacoma to get a.
No, no, sir. And I would invite commissioners for you to come over to our building anytime. We have a building about two blocks from main campus and we do all of the therapeutic court treatment services here. And so they are embedded. They have a clinic licensure here in our building. And so they operate right here in our building and see our participants, again, both our DUI drug court and our family recovery court, right here in our building.
Excellent. Any questions? Other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Sabrina. Appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you.
So that'll keep three B in place and managing. And let's go to item four A, central services contract award for building three roof replacement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thomas Tremke, Capital Projects Manager. We're requesting move to award a contract with Queen City Sheet Metal Roofing of Tquilla, Washington for three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine eighty-nine to replace the roof on building three. It's passed its useful life. We received six bids on this, on this request for proposal and Queen City was the lowest responsible bidder. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions on the roof?
You, you said sheet metal and does that mean we're gonna put metal on the roof?
Roofing companies have sheet metal for the flashing and.
Right.
And no, I mean, just the sheet metal that's associated with the roofing that they have replaced.
It's gonna get fixed. That's the main thing.
Yes.
All right. If there's no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, item five A, Washington Electric Vehicle Charging Program Grant Agreement for EV chargers at Thurston County facilities. Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager, morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, so this is a grant agreement we discussed last week. It's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for EV chargers that will be to fuel county fleet vehicles at two sites, the atrium lot across the street where we house the fleet vehicles in that fenced-in area and the waste and recovery center. It will be for up for twen, up to twenty ports at the atrium and up to four ports at the waste and recovery center. And I'm continuing to work with staff in central services, Bruce Verbach, Tim, sorry, Rick Thomas, as well as Summer and Budget to work out some of the budget specifics and work with Public Works spokes as well. And we're ready to sign the agreement with Commerce and then we would move forward aiming to procure and install the stations in early 2025.
Okay.
Any questions?
This last week, any questions?
Are these quick charge units or are they the longer?
They're the level two. So the, the longer time, medium, you know, not slow, slow chargers.
How long does it take to charge from a low battery to a full battery?
Depending on the car, it's usually.
Eight hours.
Six to eight hours. Yeah.
Six to eight hours.
So when people are using the car, they, and they come back in, by the next day, it's all charged up, ready to go?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
I just, I still, like, I, I'm all for like vehicle charging. But so like, these would be removed when we leave? I still like have a hard time. There's twenty, there'd be twenty chargers here. I'm just worried about this one because we don't own it, right?
Right.
And it like, I, in my mind, if I rented a house, I wouldn't re-roof it without expecting some type of, you know, discount on my rent. And like, that's kind of the situation we're in here. But I, I like, we're not building in some asset, some, you know, thing that makes that parking lot more valuable to the, the landlord and then just transferring that asset five years from now when we are moving out of here. I mean, maybe this isn't a question for you, but like.
No, no, it's a good.
Or do we pick these things up and they get transplanted somewhere else?
We're, we're discussing that. Appreciate you raising the question. And since you raised it the first time, we've discussed it a bit. Do you want to?
Yeah, so the lifespan of chargers doesn't go much beyond four or five years.
Okay.
So while we would have the ability in some cases, although we're, there's two levels of funding. One says you can remove them before, one says you can remove them in ten. Rebecca's asking for them to change that ten year to the four year. That other funding source wasn't identified.
That's the PSC one.
The first time that we had the conversation. But in talking with the team that are saying, Leonard, you don't really want them after four or five years anyways.
So then are we stuck with the cost of rebuilding the parking lot after we pull them out? Because like some places you, you, you lease a building and you want to put in a floor drain, you got to pay to put the floor drain in. And then when you leave that building, you got to pay to take the floor drain out.
That's a great question.
And we, do we have a massive EV fleet currently we're plugging into that? That we, or are we like, well, over the next five years, we expect to increase our EV fleet by five percent? And then we're gonna have this massive structure that we're never gonna use? And then we're gonna pay to have removed from a parking lot in five years?
It's a great question. Let me talk to the team that handles the lease to determine if there is gonna be costs incurred. So Rebecca and I will do that research. If, is there a time sensitivity to approving?
Because I like this idea.
Yes.
I just want it to be more than like, it, it feels good to do. It's got to, like, do we have vehicles that'll be plugged in next week?
Bruce did provide to PSC for those matching funds, a fleet plan over the next five years. So we can send that to you. It didn't necessarily get up to twenty cars in a very short time. So that would be, you know, planning for the future, assuming there's the possibility we're here longer than five years. I, I don't know that, but yes, Commissioner.
I'm wondering, I mean, does it have to be the atrium? Could it be Public Works or Tilly or?
Something we own already?
Something we own already, right? We're doing four at the work, which is great, you know. Would it be okay to, to Attila or for emergency services or even where facilities is or?
Rebecca, do we have the ability to change based on how you've written the grant?
Or, or no?
I, Commerce is giving us a September third deadline at this point to sign the grant agreement. We could do a change order of the site.
We have them one more meeting that we have to the third to do the research and bring it back on the third. If it's approved, we can get it signed and sent back. The only reason I'm, I'm saying that is I don't want to speak for other departments on the fly here. I think there's some research we have to do. I would hate to say, yes, this could work in a, over here or over there. And then there's infrastructure, you know, all the things that you've been working through. We have to put that into context to answer these questions.
Is there, is there a way that we can move forward to approve the, I mean, I don't want to put any kind of funding at risk, especially because of the work that's already gone into it, right? And I, I just, it makes me nervous when we're talking about grant funding, right? And sometimes when we take our time, it's, it becomes strenuous with the state agencies that are, are giving us that funds are not as patient. And so is there a way that we can approve the grant funding and, and accept it, right? And just leave the locations kind of in the open? And then is that a possibility?
I think that the locations were part of the grant submission. Is that correct?
That would be my concern as well, Commissioner, that we.
So we choose.
They have set September third is the deadline. We may lose the grant if we don't meet that deadline at this point. I mean, I can ask for an extension and we can see. But they've also said we could do a change order after the grant is approved. So it may be a better course of action to, up to the board, of course, to approve the grant. And then after the fact, ask for that change order to change the location.
I'm all for, I, I, I love this. I just like, I want to make sure it makes sense because not owning the parking lot, putting money into something we don't own, if we have to repair it when we leave here and then putting it in when, you know, we don't necessarily have the EVs now in anticipation that we'd have them in five years when we don't even have a lease. That's like, that is the only part of me that I want to like wrap my head around.
We can do the research. If she's saying that, so two things in tension. There's some things we want to vet, but we don't want to lose the money. It's your choice if you want to prove it now. If she's, if Rebecca's saying that we can submit an addendum after fact, then we'll do the research to your questions, which are really good questions, things that we will bet in the future prior to bringing it to your vetting comment. And then we can see if, if locations can change. I will say that in some of the location conversations, it's not as easy as just shifting because there are infrastructure costs that have to go in. And we would expect the departments to pay those costs and they haven't budgeted for them. So, but we can do all that research off to the side and then come back to the board with what, what some recommendations are.
I just, again, it makes, it makes me antsy to delay this until the date of, I feel that if.
Me too. Well, maybe we don't delay it, but we get the questions answered because if we, if we haven't looked, spoke to the tenant and they say, well, it's gonna cost you a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars when you leave to repair the parking lot. And we're like, whoa, you know, maybe that doesn't make sense. Or if.
And maybe those questions have been answered. We just have to work with staff to round that up. I know that Rebecca's been working on this for this facility for some time. So this isn't something just.
Yes. Talking to the owner of the building is, is on my to-do list right after, I'm waiting for a response from PSC about that ten-year, they're, they're asking for a ten-year service agreement for the matching funds. And I'm asking them to reduce that to five years. But that still doesn't answer your question. So.
Well, what would that look like if we had a ten-year service agreement and we're only here for five years?
What's, what's the matching funds? That's the first time I've heard matching funds.
Yes. I brought that up last week. And that might be another agreement that we bring to the board for, so there, there's, the grant is up to seventy-five percent. And so we've applied for a Puget Sound Energy rebate program to, to make that. It's not counting that.
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I really think we shouldn't jeopardize losing it.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with my heat on this.
I would think that, I mean, I, if what you're saying would be true, I'd be concerned about that, the cost of, you know, but if the charger itself isn't, you know, needs to be replaced, but what's gonna be a cost is like the wiring, right? Right? The infrastructure tearing up the parking lot or repairing it. You'd think that would be something that would be of value, you know, to the next tenant here. They'd replace their own charger, but why would they want to take out the EV, like, you know, wiring? I mean, you'd think that would not be, I mean, we want to check that.
That's, that's what I was saying, is that I'm calling Christian to.
It's something that's valuable to them to have that.
Guys were putting the breweries in, in the Kaufman's property, the Kaufman, like, they're like, look, you pay for the floor drains to come in. And when you leave, the floor drains get paid to remove. And they didn't care that those would be an asset to anybody else. They had a standard box that they as landlords want. And, you know, and it, to me, yeah, you're right. Like, well, that's a net, but that's just not the way it works.
Commissioner Fornier has a, has a great question. We will run that to ground because we don't want to be unintentionally surprised that, he's correct, a lot of leases are, you have to return things to, to a situation or state. But it's a great question. Location question's a great question. The board wants to approve this with the continued direction to me to work with the team to run those questions to ground. And as Rebecca said, if there is a process to submit an addendum after the fact with some changes, we'll look to do that. I think what she's balancing, and I really appreciate her hard work, is the funding and the timeline with the fact that these are complicated funding sources, like the ten years thing just popped up since our last review. And she's working with her contacts to see if that ten-year requirement can be removed altogether. So we're making the decision, should we hold, but then miss our, our window to bring this aboard for approval, bringing it forward. And so knowing that there are questions, we can still round those up.
Is it, is it possible, I mean, if we didn't approve it today, it could be approved at the twenty-sixth. I'd like Commissioners checking it.
Absolutely.
Stand on item. We don't have to wait till the last moment of September third.
Yep. We could.
Just give you guys this week to figure out some of those questions. I don't know, it's an alternative.
We could, I would think we could approve it now also, like, but just say pending, you know, further, you know, investigation. Because, you know, maybe if, if it comes back and ten years is required. Because, you know, maybe if, if it comes back and 10 years is required and we're, you know, we're saying, well, we only anticipate being here another five, then maybe just the work is the appropriate place to put them in. I would imagine there'd be.
I don't think there's enough space that I'm aware of for the full.
Not saying all the full.
Just the work charges.
Yeah, if we had to, if we had to fall back and it, and like it doesn't pencil here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the research. I think we're hearing what you're saying about looking for options. And it's really the board's purview, but you're, you're correct, Chair. We could approve this next week and on one of our standing meetings. Or we can approve it today.
I would say just approve it, like, let's just, I mean, it's right in front of the board. It's the actions right here. I think that staff have heard the questions. They can come and follow up with us next week or whenever is appropriate. And if we need to do a change order at that time, we can, we can do that. But seeing that the action's already in front of the board today, I, I would say just, let's just move forward with it. That's just my.
And I'd add, I commend Rebecca for going out there and trying to find this grant money to help move our county forward. So well done on that.
Absolutely, and getting those match fundings from PSC, great job. And, you know, I've been highly impressed with how you've been hustling out there to really get us some grant funding. I know it takes a lot of work, so really appreciate the work that goes into this.
And I'd also say on the backend, we'll work to do a better job of trying to answer all the questions that you might have. Good questions before we come to this stage in the future.
Yeah, especially with this building, we understand the sensitivity, knowing that there's larger discussions about our timeframe here and what the future holds, so.
There's actually restrictions on when an item is amortized out. And if you can add that item and leave the item.
Sure.
Versus you have to take it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the lease and talk to those who are experts in that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Public Health and Social Services Amendment 1 to Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program Contract with Washington State Healthcare Authority. You see Katie Strozick, are you the lead on this item?
Yeah, thank you. Katie Strozick, opioid and overdose response, public health and social services. This is going to be the same one that we went over last week. This item, followed by the next one on the agenda, are both related to our law enforcement assisted diversion program. This first item is going to be an amendment of about $40,000 to our existing contract with healthcare authority for the lead program. It has the same deadlines and timeline as our current contract. So this $40,000 will be added with needing to be utilized by the end of June 2025.
Questions on the first item? Nope, okay, let's go to the second item.
Cool, so that also is supplemental money for our lead program. It's written into a separate contract because it's a different funding source from healthcare authority. This one is going to be $405,000. It's meant as infrastructure and expansion supplemental funding for our lead program. It'll be subcontracted to Olympic Health and Recovery Services, which is who holds our current case management contract for the lead program. This has the same terms as the existing contract where the funding will expire at the end of June 2025.
Okay, and so this is just adding to, so the existing contracts that there, that are being added to are also through June 30th, 2025?
Correct.
And then what happens then? State decides whether to extend or do we know?
So it is expected to continue. So the $405,000 that we're receiving, that will be a one-time fund that we receive for expansion, infrastructure, things like technology, transportation, training for staff, participant supports, things like that. That was unanticipated funding that healthcare authority received that they allocated across lead programs in the state, including one-time funding to set up new lead programs. We got funding just to supplement our existing program. The $40,000 and that contract, it is expected that that will continue after June. We're just waiting for the legislature to allocate funding and then for healthcare authority to allocate funding. They've been doing it on two-year cycles for their contracts with us. So our next contract would potentially start July 1st. There hasn't been an interruption in services for the timeline, or for the history in which we've contracted with healthcare authority.
Other questions for Katie? Okay, thank you. See you this afternoon. That takes us to our standing items and so do we have, I look to the clerk of the board. You have, can we go over the changes just so that we're all on the same page? We decided to, we're keeping 3B. We decided to remove 3A, so then everything bumps up a letter. But we're keeping B, C, D, E.
We pulled, we pulled E.
We pulled E?
Yeah, we pulled E because Wayne wanted to review.
Oh, right, okay, we pulled A, we pulled E. And then there was a question about having A to the department item or consent. And is everybody okay with consent?
You wanted it to be at a department item?
I thought about the department item, but.
You can have it as a department item, I don't.
And then the public gets, and the public and our employees get to know that we're working on their issues.
Okay, well, that's, sounds like there's concurrence with that. So we'll pull A off as a department item. And then everything on the department items, A, we're going forward on five, the EV charging grant, right? Is that where that landed? Okay, and then six, A and B.
With more to come.
With more to come, but taking the legislative action. Okay, got it? All right. 1017, let's take like 10 minutes and we'll pick up item two. All right, it's 10:30. We're picking back up with our agenda setting meeting. Item two is review of the Transportation Benefit District Agenda for today's meeting. And I'll turn it over to the President.
And I'm going to turn it straight to Jennifer Walker. Thank you, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. The Transportation Benefit District Meeting, first item up will be a call to order. The board will approve the August 20th, 2024. The Board will approve the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four agenda, and then approval of the meeting minutes from March nineteenth. The second item on the agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. I do have indication that we will have someone make public comment during the meeting. And then the third item is a presentation to the Board, which is a combination of items that are follow-up requests that came from the Board requesting those in the March.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Back to you.
All right. Well done. Let's go to item three. Proclamations and awards. Let's see, we've got two today, and then the next one up is First Responders Day on September third.
I have no additional updates for the two today. The proclamations for Target Zero and International Road Awareness Day are included in your packet. And Tara and Shlana, Target Zero, Public Manager, in the Prosecutor and Attorney's Office. And Katie Strozak will be in attendance, both with additional community partners to accept the proclamations.
We already kind of reviewed these, so is there any questions generally about our proclamation schedule? September third, and that's, I know that's kind of scheduled around that potluck barbecue that Councilmember Callahan does. Yep. Can we invite him to the meeting where we do the proclamation?
Yes, I have him on my invite list.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Then next up is Advisory Boards and Commissions.
As you may recall from last week, the BOE Board Equalization recommends Ted May be appointed as a regular member for the remainder of Mr. Morrison's unexpired term through March one, twenty twenty-five. Ted currently serves as an alternate member on the BOE, and his current term also expires March one, twenty twenty-five. Ruth Elder, Staff Contact for BOE, is bringing the BOE's request to convene on September third as a formal item on your agenda. That will allow the BOE to hear the petitions for the twenty twenty-three assessment year. If you'd like to move forward to appointing Ted, we can include that on the September third agenda as well. If you'd like us to do a larger recruitment, we can move forward with that.
So our choice is to appoint him on September third, and they're gonna address the issue you said on their agenda?
They're going to bring an item to the Board on the September third agenda. It's their annual request to convene, to let the Board of Equalization may hear the petitions filed from the previous year.
How does that connect to this?
Well, so currently there are two regular members on the BOE. There's one vacancy for the third regular member. There are three alternates that are all full. But if Ted were appointed to the regular member seats, he would have a full BOE.
I guess I'm curious, what's the holdup on, I thought we were gonna do Ted May today. I thought, weren't we, weren't we gonna do Ted today?
I provided the information, I think, last week, and wanted to circle back.
Are we waiting for the Board of Equalization to make a recommendation?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
They did provide a recommendation to appoint Ted.
So I don't know why they're just putting him on.
No.
If you get them September three.
Okay. Why not just get it over with, I guess?
And, and not to put him on today?
And how about Kurt? Don't we wanna put him on there?
We're getting there.
That's nice. Last week, he sent an email update to you on the Salary Commission and included Kurt's application. He's a former director of Emergency Services. Kurt is eligible for the vacant Personnel Management Representative.
Great. Multiple thumbs there, I see, for appointing. So is there consensus to put Mr. May and Mr. Harden on for today's consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay, Kuescher, Klaus. Okay, very good. So that's done. And that's, we don't have any other pending applications to worry about? Have we gotten, since we kind of tried casting a net for some of these commissions?
I am going to send you an email update this week on the Racial Equity and Inclusion Council. That is the only other one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're up to Commissioner Items. I don't know if this one, County Manager, you sent us an email about bridges and...
Yeah, I can give you an update about that.
That's something you intended to address this morning? Okay, let's start with that one. That's pretty weighty.
Can I ask one more question about Advisory Boards and Commissions? Planning Commission, we usually have a dinner just to catch up with our planning commissioners and kind of see how is the process going, is there any things, right, just to give? And so I'm wondering...
Is it a manual dinner?
Uh, yeah.
What time of year is it normally scheduled for?
It's been kind of random throughout every year. I think it's whenever someone remembers and they're like, oh, yeah, like we...
Like right now?
Like right now.
Tonight.
But it's, it's held on an annual basis, and it can be like later in the fall. I know right now they're pretty busy with the comprehensive plan and all the different items, but just, it's just good to check in.
Do you have a dinner here or offsite?
We have it offsite.
At Ty's house?
Yeah.
It's been at Mercado.
Bulgarian food.
Yeah, well, I'll work with Josh.
It's kind of a recognition for them, they put a lot of work in.
It's a thank you plus kind of an airing of, you know, whatever issues they want us to hear about all at once. It's kind of combined.
Grievances.
Airing of grievances. No, not grievances. It's usually a very productive and, you know...
Yeah, we'll get that, thank you for flagging it. We'll get that going. And is it something just between Commissioners' place and Planning?
I think Cepid's been involved.
Yeah, Cepid does the logistics, and then it's the Commissioner's Office, and then the Director and others join.
Okay, great. We'll work. If we have the continuity, we'll get that going. All right, to the bridge item that you mentioned, the...
County Manager, could I check the chair here? But the, on this whole bridge thing, aren't we gonna need Public Works to at least be here at the table? Because are they public roads? Are they not?
I don't mind, they don't, they're not been part of the conversation.
They haven't been part of it yet. Okay.
Let me say this, they've not been part of the official conversation because, but please, if you wanna come up to the table, I don't wanna...
Or at least don't leave the room right now. I can see questions.
Please come to the table. So again, the context is there are bridges that are owned by the city of Centralia, that they are the major thoroughfares into part of Thurston County where we have some development. A while back, the Fire Department out there mentioned that they needed to rate the bridges for insurance purposes, and so they did that, and they put the ratings on, on the bridges.
Is it in Lewis County or in Thurston County?
Thurston.
They're in Thurston?
Yeah, at the canal. Centralia Power Canal.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, well, just on the edge, yeah.
Sorry. Thanks for the context. And so when they put those, those numbers, those weight limits, now we have the fire, trash, propane, and really any other large utility vehicle saying that they can't traverse those bridges. And so the rating of those bridges created the problem. Now, because they are owned by the city of Centralia, City of Centralia first started to look into it. That's where I asked Matt, who had heard about it, Matt, our engineer, who had heard about some complaints. And we didn't know if the city, I didn't know the full context, if the city had rated the bridges or not, or if the feds had rated the bridges. And so Matt said that something similar had happened in context to Thurston County, and he wouldn't have a problem reaching out to the interim City Manager, Amy Buckler. So he did that, and Amy Buckler mentioned to me that she put him straight through to their engineer team. But the context is different. It wasn't the feds coming down and requiring. It was something that one of their, um, um, community stakeholders did to make sure they understood. Now, there's several bridges. Questions?
It's multiple bridges? There's six. One of them's already on schedule to be repaired, so they're, they're...
And they're all private.
They're inquiring about...
They're private bridges.
They're private. They're not county roads.
As far as I know, they are not county roads, and we don't own them.
That is accurate.
So who, the city owns, the city of Centralia owns some?
And they're on private drives. They're not on county roads.
They're at the end of a county road.
This is not on county roads, but what, and you, you all will know this more from a local geographic dynamic, but what I mean, was conveyed to me, and I really appreciate Amy Buckler being proactive and giving us a heads up, because we have begun to receive complaints, that, that's, those bridges are used by Thurston County folks because it's, it's an access way to get into their neighborhoods.
Can we, I...
Wanna bring it up on a map?
Yeah, I was like...
But it's six bridges, but like they're, they're private bridges, private roads to access neighborhoods, but they're owned by Centralia because it's like Centralia Power and Light or something? Okay.
That's where they have that seven-mile...
So they have a utility that has a nine-mile waterway.
Nine mile. Nine mile waterway that feeds over the canal.
Just like Tacoma Power has property down in Maytown.
Okay.
So, so Commissioner, let me, so there's this nine-mile diversion that creates the waterway for their hydro dam. Along that waterway, they have bridges that go across there. Those bridges were built at a certain time where there wasn't a lot of development, so they're like country little bridges.
And in the Fire Department, it's like, well, we don't know if we can drive our trucks across these. We want these graded somehow.
Because they're rickety bridges. In the meantime, Thurston County has approved development over here, right? If this is where that little thing is, development over here. You can get there, you just have to go around the long way.
When you say development, though, I don't think, I wanna put that in context. It's not like into...
Four hundred houses.
Twenty-five total people.
Yeah, I think there's what, seventeen?
Six bridges. And we approved those buildings built twenty-five years ago?
Longer ago.
Okay.
So we'll bring it up.
Hundred years ago.
Bring it up, okay. So now, um, the city of Centralia is at a place where those service, those service providers...
That's right.
Those service, hold on a second, those service providers, you can give all the commentary you want, let me just finish. Those service providers are telling those residents, we can't cross the bridges.
Yeah, their fire ratings go through the roof.
Those residents have expressed concern to Centralia. Amy Buckler got direction from her council to say, "We don't believe that the city of Centralia ratepayers, and why ratepayers is because it's their utility, should foot the bill to upgrade the bridges."
Why, what?
Hold on, let me, I understand, hold on. You can ask all the questions you want. And so, so the request that came was very big. It was, she was on behalf of her council coming to say, "Is Thurston County interested in partnering on potential solutions?" I said, "What does that mean?" She said, "I don't know yet."
Pay for it.
Because, yes, I know, but that...
Yeah.
What I mean is, what is it, the dollar amount? What is the context? I said, "I can't agree to anything. What my commitment is, I will update the commissioners, but I can't agree to any type of partnership. They would be the ones that have to agree that." She understood that. Right now, they have an engineering firm that's looking at what it would cost to upgrade the bridges, but they're not inclined to upgrade the bridges if, because they don't have the funds to do that. So that would mean that those service providers, there's gonna be that issue for those residents because they can't, they, they won't go across the bridges currently.
Okay, can, can I add something to that? Whatever we decide to do, if we decide to do anything, because it's nothing, we had nothing to do with this. The county didn't have anything to do with this. But there are also private bridges across the Deschutes River and across the Schucum Chuck River. And so we should be very careful on how we proceed so we don't set a precedent.
I agree.
So that we're out there building tiny bridges somewhere. And, and you're right, a railroad car will handle these bridges. I can tell you that. They'd be way stronger than what, what they are today, and it's a very narrow crossing. It's only like, I don't know, twelve feet or something, I think.
I think Commissioner Edwards should write the response letter. The Fire Department's right for doing this, you know, like I've seen fire trucks fall through some of these bridges. And, you know, if we, you know, we approved permits to build here, what, you said a hundred years ago, it, how is it anybody else, other than Centralia City Lights' responsibility to maintain their bridges over the last hundred years?
There will be public speakers that come to the meeting most likely today. So just be prepared that Centralia's already communicated that they're gonna be looking into the county to help work on a solution. They did that on their own accord. I never gave any indication that we were interested. Again, my commitment was to brief you all. We don't have any liability here, and they're not claiming that we do have liability. They're just asking, did we wanna partner with them? That will most likely be partnering, partnering from a financial standpoint, and I don't see that there's any trigger that would require us to do that. I do appreciate Matt reaching out just as a courtesy to talk them through his expertise. As we know, he gets really pumped when he's putting in a new bridge. And so...
It's my job.
They appreciated that outreach. But yes, Commissioner, they haven't made a formal ask for funds, but that's probably where it'll go. It would be good for me to get a sense of what your disposition is on this so I can report back to Amy that there's not really an appetite to provide any partnership that would lead to any type of funding. That's the decision of the commission.
And this is Centralia, not Lewis County P U D? This is like Centralia?
The city of Centralia.
They have their own power and life system.
I...
Produces thirty percent of their city's power.
First gut instinct for me is like, no. We have enough strain on our own resources to then be expending it on another jurisdictions. I, I would wanna know, I guess, I, I just still have a lot of questions, like, how many of Thurston County residents would be affected?
They say it in here, I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five households.
Twenty-five households.
Five bridges.
But you have to think about the other ones that this is gonna set a precedent.
You're absolutely right. There's an unknown amount of bridges that are in this exact same situation.
Situation, and I...
Who's coming to public comment? Is it these twenty-five households to tell us we should fix this with Centralia?
Thurston County residents are frustrated because now they have some service providers saying, "We're not gonna pick up the trash. We can't respond in a fire the same way, or it's gonna take us a much longer response time. We can't service your propane tanks."
I think our responsibility at this point is to advocate for those homeowners.
I think that, at that, if they do come and provide public comment, I think that I, I would be willing, you know, or whoever the Commissioner for that district is.
Think about the precedent.
No, we'll sit down with the residents and like hear them out, right? And, and see like, okay, what is being affected, right? Is it the services? And I'm sure they'll provide public comment on that, but just also get information. So that way we know exactly what it is that we're advocating for as well. Is it just the services piece? And what exactly is it, right, that there, is it the rates going up?
Yeah, when a fire truck can't get to their house, their, their fire insurance goes through the roof.
So that, I think those, those are things that we need to, like...
Yeah, we're happy to do fact-finding. I think what, what I'm...
If they can even get insurance.
What the city is asking us, that their interim City Manager is, are we open to some type of partnership? And if the answer is, we need more information, or we don't see this as our liability, the city of Centralia's position, as relayed to me by the interim City Manager, is their council hasn't made a formal decision, but the perspective coming from their council is the, the utility ratepayers would have to end up paying for that infrastructure enhancement. They don't see why Centralia residents should have to pay for something that doesn't benefit them.
But it does benefit them because they have the possession of the canal.
Well, you can make that argument, but what, it's not their residents that need those bridges to get the service. It's Thurston County residents.
So they're saying that they could have just not had bridges at all.
Correct.
And then the county residents would have to go around, so we would be helping out to help our...
I, I don't know that they built any of these bridges. I think these bridges were built by individual landowners years ago.
Okay, I don't have...
But I, I don't know...
But I, I don't know that. I'm just saying, this has been going on for about a hundred years.
She, she, this, they did claim ownership of bridges, that they're on their property, that they, they own them and be responsible to, um, to update them.
Yeah.
Jennifer, you want to add?
Yes, so whether it was a bridge or just a road, it's private. Um, so from our perspective, from the department's perspective, um, it's a private road. Um, it just so happens that the city may own it, um, but that's a part of their management of the property. But the county has, the, the county is not responsible or has an obligation to provide that legal access to people's property. So this is a, I mean, granted, there's other elements, um, items that the board may want to consider, but from a public works perspective and access to the property, it's a private property, private landowner issue. And they, as residents that live at least across, but they're on a private road, they would get together and determine what that resolution is.
And gifting of public funds has got to be taken into consideration here too, so.
One other note, um, it was a southeast Thurston fire chief that sent a letter to the homeowners that, and that, that letter, I don't have a copy of it, but it was in essence saying, we had to rate the bridges, the bridges, um, don't support our units, and so we're working on a solution, try to figure out how we provide service. I think that's what caused the immediate alarm. Oh, great, if we have a fire, we're not going to, our medical response, we're not going to have the engines coming to our aid. That wasn't coordinated with city of Centrelia.
Yeah.
They were caught off guard by that as well.
They're not calling, or they're- Legal folks need to be involved.
They can't drive a fire truck across that- But you're saying that there was, that they can go around some longer route?
Not always, no.
So there's some people that are completely landlocked?
They're landlocked.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the map, Commissioner, I'm just going based on what, um, Amy Buckler said, uh, that in some cases there was a long way around, but, um, Commissioner-
There's a few that there's no other way around, except going through private properties and stuff. A road could be built, you know?
And, and again, I'm not advocating this, I'm just saying, as stated, city of Centrelia's perspective is, along the way, whether it's a hundred years ago, fifty years ago, thirty years ago, county approved-
Development.
Development there, and what they're, they have two requests, will you partner with us in fixing the bridges? But secondly, if you're going to approve any more development in that area, we just consult with us to make sure that there's adequate infrastructure in roads if they have to go through, um, their property.
This was long before the Growth Management Act, and there was no restrictions in place. The state allowed properties to be divided, but there's only a few. And that's really how this all came about. That's more the history. We didn't, I don't think we've issued a, a permit.
The spirit of which they've come to us is not with the demand, or you guys are liable, it's more of, we're not going to have the funds to do this.
Your residents are going to be angry.
Right, we, this, this letter triggered this chain reaction, we're getting complaints, you're starting to get complaints.
They certainly have the ability to find the funds through, I mean, they're a utility. They have utility taxes that are pretty, or utility fees that are a lot different than we have the ability to raise.
What they're signaling with, because obviously this, there's no council direction, but what they're signaling is their council may say, for residents that don't, that we don't even provide power to or support, we don't want to make that investment.
Yeah.
And so then the bridges will stand as they are, with the limits that they are, and those residents will be impacted. What the impact is, Commissioner Mahia's point, I, we haven't got into all the complaints yet. There's probably been about three or four that have come in.
Well, Matt, why don't you look into some railroad cars, how much are they?
And then those residents would take legal action against the city of Centrelia potentially?
They could, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
It's going to be a mess as it moves on.
Is this ditch something that is still part of their power companies?
Yeah, they get thirty percent of their power through, through that.
Through this ditch?
Yeah, through the waterway that they channel off the river, it hits a hydroelectric dam, goes back in, they, they, it's active.
Do we permit the ditch?
No.
Have leverage there?
I haven't done any research on this.
Shut off the water?
Yeah.
This, the ditch has been there a long time.
It's been there since, I think, the, um, she said, like, yeah, late twenties.
Wow.
Just before the depression.
Probably the president gave authorization to put it in, to rebuild America.
They're one of the few, um, government entities that have water rights off of that river.
And they want to preserve that, so they should maintain their bridges.
So Commissioner, uh, is hearing the conversation, just, I'm happy to get back to Amy and say, at this point, there's no appetite for any type of financial partnership.
Well, just, I think you ought to be more definite than that. We don't have the resources to do it. We'd like to help, I think we'd all like to help, but I don't know that we've got any resources. And the precedent setting that may take place, because there's a, a bunch of these places. And some of them are actually serving developments of a sub, a substantial number of homes.
So Commissioners, is there agreement for me to state that we don't have the resources, um, to participate in any type of financial solutions?
Is there any ability for us to, like, assist or advocate or support the residents in their, uh, you know, in their efforts to see that their needs are met? I mean, like, that's what I would be interested in, is if, you know, we can help support their-
But we don't have any financial?
No, 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 I'm saying, like, what, I don't know what means that would be, or doing further legal research, or is there anything to research? But like, if they have a request of, uh, Centrelia to maintain those bridges, are we able to say, yeah, we support their request? We think you should? You know, it's not our liability, it's not our responsibility, it's yours, and we expect you to-
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can meet with the residents to determine what their impacts are and come back to the board with another discussion about how we try to position a level of support. I think that in the, um, conversation in the email that, um, Ms. Buckler provided, we're going to get a counter response, well, they're not our residents, it's not our, those roads are, bridges are fine for our purposes, we don't need to upgrade them because we're not, we don't have a responsibility to provide those services to those residents.
Yeah.
I, I think, I'm just preparing you for a catch-22 argument. It's not our responsibility, well, it's not our responsibility. The residents are going to be the ones in the middle, and so we're happy to meet with them if that's the direction of the commissioners. You'll probably hear from them, some of them today, so that it's good to be thinking down how you're going to handle that.
I, I guess one other thing maybe on that is that statewide, this has got to be a big issue statewide in a lot of different areas that we're, and, and I'll go back to the bridges over the Niskwa, over the Deschutes and the Schukum Chuck. That, those things were put in many, many years ago by private people. Tyrell Road down by, uh, the Schukum Chuck, I think it's got a bridge that goes across. Anyway, and so it's going to be a big issue if insurance companies start canceling homeowners that live on the other side and that kind of thing. So somewhere along the line, it's going to be, take a legislative fix, I think. I don't know how that's going to go, but.
I see a map of Robby's.
Well, I just, I have worked with communities that have been impacted by load restrictions in the past, and I think part of it, or one of the questions I would have, is has the community, have they reached out to their providers? The fire district may be a little bit more difficult, but those that are actually, uh, doing deliveries, whether it's being garbage pickup or, um, propane, et cetera, I know that in the past, it's sometimes working with those vendors because garbage haulers often have different sized vehicles, sometimes they may not trigger some of those weight restrictions, same thing with propane haulers, et cetera. It's another path potentially.
Something, Matt?
Just to go a little bit off of what Gary said, this is a potential opportunity for us to look for legislative fixes as we are looking towards our federal lobbyists and all of that. We could be leveraging the US Department of Transportation to create programs to support smaller bridges, those, those ones that are public or private that fall below the threshold. That might be an opportunity for different grant funding. We could also ask the state for different transportation funding for those smaller bridges. I know, city of Tenino has several bridges that fall within that smaller, smaller frame that can't get much funding. Um, this would be a great opportunity for private owners to be asking for funding for those larger transportation needs as well. So I think that's something also we should be, um, potentially looking towards, because that'd be a great way to advocate for constituents without us having to rake over the money.
Right, something we can respond to our constituents about. And if that's the type of coordination that city of Centrelia is looking for, that, that would make sense.
Yeah, and I can go back and say, we're happy to support legislative fixes, support talking with vendors to see if there's alternative ways to provide service.
And not to continue this conversation too much longer, but going back to what Jennifer said and how Matt, how you ended, it is a private road, it is private property. So whatever we address, that needs to be first and foremost the consideration.
Gifting, I, I'd like to see our attorneys here involved in this discussion, because I think we've got some real, we do have, maybe we have, or maybe we don't have liability issues, but I don't think we're the ones that ought to be making that decision. That's where our attorneys ought to be coming in. So I'm hoping they'll review this discussion and get back to us.
And you want them to review, uh-
What we've talked about right here, what our responsibilities are, for example. Are there responsibilities that we have?
Is there, is there a situation, scenario whereby the county would become liable for something based on these types of situations?
Yeah, we can vet that with them.
And, and then think about the precedent that it might set countywide, because there's a bunch of-
Just for clarification also, on the large lot in, in one of the areas, specifically on that large lot map, Thurston County has no responsibility to build, improve, maintain, or otherwise service the private roads within or provide access to the property described in this large lot subdivision.
Where are you reading that from?
From the large lot, the 2019 large lot plat off of Cluans, so it's one, um-
Pretty definitive.
It's private, we have private roads, that's why people get title insurance if they have lending, I mean, there's, that's what title insurance company-
Is that a county ordinance or a state law? Cause I think there is a state law that allows all those divisions of properties, less than forty acres or something like that.
What specifically?
When, when you divide property and sell property. I don't think the county has any of it.
This has to do with access, but-
We'll research it, um, from a liability standpoint. I hear what the commissioners are saying, um, wanting to know if there's any, any realm that we can be held liable. And I will report back to Ms. Buckler that we're happy to support in advocating for legislative fixes, um, with, with providers to see if they can provide different service alternative, uh, but at this time, we don't have, uh, resources. Thanks so much. Any other discussion on that item?
Well, I would be curious if any of the other properties have that kind of language. Did you just kind of pull that one at random?
Recorded on the roadmap.
Just because, you know, if the property owners are coming to us angry, it's like, well, this is a restriction on your-
Well, maybe we, maybe we could have that printed out, but she just, you know.
I mean, that's-
Yeah, and possibly for today, since there's a lot of stuff we're researching, maybe you just make a comment that you've asked the county manager to research, research this, and we're happy to get back to you. We can coordinate with those that are, um, submitting their concerns through the clerk of, or through Amy. Any response that we would, of course, run by you all before we send back, but if there's language on plot maps that clearly says it's your responsibility, then we'll work that through our attorneys to make sure we're not missing something.
I know it'd be an extensive amount of research, but for those individual property owners, that's their, that's their responsibility.
Their due diligence.
It is, and so putting that on-
They have constructive notice of those types of-
Sorry?
They would have constructive notice of-
Through their title.
That types of language through the, through the real estate documents.
This one does.
So I'd be like curious if that was done for more of them, to just one.
When do you think that was divided, that particular?
I think this was 2019.
Twenty nineteen.
I don't know.
So there'll be others that have been there, that's what I, again, that's, it's not the county's responsibility to provide the legal access to the property, but as Leonard said, we will consult with our attorneys.
Yeah.
But doing individual research on each of those property owners is very labor intensive, and it's more what title companies do.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting to you, what you're saying, Commissioner, that we would do high level overview, that if there was notice out there, you need to go back to your own title documentation when you bought the house to look at that. I think it's a matter of, if we don't have the resources, what are, how can we help in other ways? That's what I hear other commissioners saying. So our message isn't just a, a hard no.
Yeah, as long as we're not just saying, that's not our problem.
Exactly, we don't want to do that, um, and that we also communicate that same spirit to the city of Centrelia with being definitive that we don't have the resources, and that there could be, once we talk to the attorneys, a potential risk of giving to public funds since it is privately owned, et cetera.
Okay.
This item, um, is in response to, um, Commissioner, uh, Spencer, off the complaint that we got. CPED code compliance team has been actively engaged in addressing violations at both properties in a timely manner. Civil penalties are currently being issued for Katkins Court property, while a notice of violation has been issued for the property at Buckeye Court. And then there was an email sent by Amy on the sixteenth that kind of provides the detail of the citations and the process that's being followed. And then CPED will continue to work to resolve the violations in accordance with county, uh, policies and protocols. So that's where that stands.
And do we know if any of that's been communicated to the public commenter?
I don't, but we can share the same information. Did he, he had to submit his information. Yeah, we have it, then we can submit that to him.
It is standard process for complainants to check in with our compliance group, and our compliance group does give them updates. Okay. So in accordance with that update, the Katkins Court is, the ball's in the court for the potential violator, as well as Buckeye Court. So they are, our compliance group is going through the appropriate due process. Property owners have a right to respond with an X amount of days, and that's where it is on both of those cases. And it's highly, highly likely that that's been communicated to the complainant as well, but doing it again at the 2:00 PM, I think, is totally valid.
What's the two, the two, you said on two different properties?
Right, so, so did, um, I can't remember his name now.
I don't even remember what the-
It's at the beginning of that email.
Two owners, two properties owned by the same person?
Ms. Kalospi, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so it's a, there's two at Katkins Court, and there's one at Buckeye Court, and they're all near each other, but they're, the Katkins Court ones are further along. They're in the civil penalty stage, and the Buckeye Court is at the notice of violation stage.
Don't we?
Both in the court of the property owner to respond back to us.
You have something going on at Union Mills too? There's a property in Union Mills, your enforcement people are-
Sticking to this one right now.
Same, same.
Commissioner Mensah, did you want this reported out, um, or did you just want us to communicate this information to?
If it's being communicated, then that's fine. I mean, you know, sometimes the, in the past, we've had, you know, not that there's that many people out there, I think, watching every one of our meetings, but when we have somebody, you know, kind of a random comment like that about an issue, and then there's an update, sometimes we give that back at the, at the public meeting, just kind of, it's kind of showing the public, hey, we're responsive to things. You might have heard about that, you know, two weeks ago, and now here's what's going on with it. Just, that's just been kind of a practice. I don't, I'm not married to it, but, um, that's why I just thought I'd ask, because I hadn't heard exactly what was going on. And that was a, a kind of a random citizen who came to a 2:00 PM board meeting, gave public comment.
Sure.
I think folks like to kind of, I feel like it's good to show, to show that we're following up on things in one way or another. But I believe, that was kind of the county manager's discretion on that, so I guess I'll just leave that to your discretion, but, um, I'm, I'm good either way. But I do like to see, I'd like to confirm that there was follow-up.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what I'll report out then today, that, um, we were able to follow up on the properties that the concerned, we'll get his name, so we'll put, but I'll report out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, next Commissioner item. Got one more, you know. You have one? Anyone? I was going to report, I guess, on the UGM subcommittee meeting yesterday.
Please do, yes. Do you want to report on it?
You want to start?
I'll start and you supplement. I, I came in halfway, actually, Commissioner Mahia was backing me up. Commissioner Mahia was backing me up because I had a building code council executive session, or not executive session, a subcommittee meeting. And so I came in right during the middle of the item about the countywide planning, planning policies. So I don't quite know everything that was said, but Commissioner Mahia passed me the baton, so I, apparently the, the mayor of Yelm had made a motion to basically just adopt the proposed language. You know, we had talked internally about how there might be some, like that the planning directors weren't really ready to move on this, but I, my, my strategy was going to be to try to, well, let's, what's the timeline? Like, how much time do you need? And let's, you know, we, Thurston County wants to move on this expeditiously, so, but before I even got into the room, Mayor DePinto had made a motion to just adopt the language today, yesterday. So that was being debated and Tom Water and Olympia wanted more time. They, they didn't like that they hadn't seen the language before. They wanted to talk to their staff. That was understandable. There was confusion about how long, there was confusion on my part about how long it would take for everybody to talk to their staff and bring it back for action. Somebody was saying that if we didn't do it today, it would take a whole another year. I mean, it would delay any action on, you know, applications for a year, but nobody could quite pin down, Mr. O'Kellyhan, is he the chair now, council member?
He was at that.
He was chairing the meeting.
Chair of this year's worth a U G M. Subcommittee meeting.
Okay, so he was basically trying to propose a date of like late October, November. Allison was, didn't seem comfortable. So I'm thinking if Alan's, you know, if, if they're not even comfortable bringing this back in November, you know, we really are looking at a lengthy delay. And my thought process was this, whatever the U G M. Subcommittee does comes to us for final decision. And so they could chew on it for six months and get it how they want it, bring it to us, and we could do something else. Or we could get it and listen to them and collaborate with them and try to get it right. We have a public hearing and take action. So I just thought from, with that complete ambiguity as to what the timeline would look like if that didn't get passed, I went ahead and voted for it and it passed five to two. We had Lacy's vote, Rainier's vote, Tenino's vote and Yelm's vote. So this will be coming to us. But I would, the Olympia representative said that she's going to draft a minority opinion. She was not happy that, that, that basically she didn't have a chance to discuss with her staff. You know, another consideration I had personally was that, as I understand it from Ashley, this is totally, like, this is totally procedural in a way. I don't know how to, what the right adjective is, but I mean, we're not, we're not substantively trying to widen countywide planning policies or change things. We're just trying to make this new legislation fit or, or not be in an ambiguous conflict. I don't know if you ever got information back from M R S C. That you were waiting for, but.
They, they weren't able to provide much more insight.
Okay, so there's a potential ambiguity and there's new legislation that's very clear, and so we just need to make it all kind of fit. So to me, it wasn't a big issue on a substantive basis. The timing, the potential timing delay looked really pretty significant if we didn't. So it was passed and so now we'll have a chance. So I'm kind of laying all that so A, you know what happened, but B, my recommendation is that we, and, and Councilmember Deputy Mayor Miller from Lacy, who voted for it, called me after the meeting to say, I do want, you know, my staff is going to want to weigh in on this and I do, would appreciate it. You know, I supported you, but I would appreciate it if you would make sure that you check base with them and see what suggestions they have. So I'm going to strongly ask staff to, you know, and, and Josh and I talked yesterday, and I think that's the intent, is that we will, we will work with them, you know, but we're over the U G M. Subcommittee hurdle. We can work with them on how, what the right language is, public hearing, board action. And maybe Josh. Then we're on our own timeline.
Actually, if you could fill me and the rest of the board in on what, what working with them looks like and what's the language we're, that we, we think is in question.
So maybe let me back up just a little bit first. So procedurally, you're right on this. To go on the record, Thurston County staff had no prior knowledge that the mayor of Yelm was going to make a motion to push this language through to open up the countywide planning policies to then engage on the U G A swap addition. I would commend Commissioner Minter for finding the middle ground within that meeting since we didn't have prior knowledge of that action. Commissioner Minter, I think, did a nice job of threading the needle of the timing for our applicant while also ensuring that the other jurisdictions are going to be a part of the conversation about what this language looks like. And so with the board's direction, once you receive that recommendation from T R P C.'s U G M., you tell us staff, please open up to the other jurisdictions so they can provide their input, information. Let's do this collaboratively, but also moving expeditiously on behalf of the applicant. So I just, it was a tricky situation. If we would have known that that action was going to be taken, we would have prepared the board differently. We are under the same impression that it was going to be an opportunity for a conversation about U G A swaps and the complications with the two legislations. But when the mayor of Yelm made the action, I think that our chair did a nice job of thinking on his feet and finding a good middle ground. So thank you for that, Chairman Sir. Your question in terms of, help me again, please?
In our court, like what, what engagement will look like? And I would say that because U G M. Subcommittee is this thing that only meets once every few years in some cases, it's really hard to have a very open, transparent process. And so the fact that it is now coming into the county's court in terms of taking the lead on engagement rather than T R P C., we will be sure to engage in a thoughtful way with all the planning directors. We'll just be leading the effort instead of T R P C. Leading the effort and we'll still keep T R P C. A prize moving forward. But at least it'll be on this, the county schedule instead of T R P C. Trying to arrange, you know, a schedule around representatives from all the different jurisdictions.
We had a meeting in December and we were supposed to have a meeting in March, I think, and here it is August and we're meeting. It's like, it, and, and we, and if we can't do anything, you know, like I didn't want to say, okay, well, let's just let everybody think about it and then we don't have another meeting till like next February. I mean, the timing is out of our control if we don't.
It sounds like you solved the problem by moving a hand on it and we'll still figure it out.
We just have to make sure we, I think we just need to backfill and not make sure, you know, that jurisdictions feel heard, so we don't damage any relationships by the action that we took. That's my only, you know, concern.
No, I, on a separate note, I was interested to hear that Snohomish has already implemented language and to, and I would be interested to see what language, right? It, it looks like, and Pierce Counties, I heard was moving ahead. So as we're moving forward, I would like to see like, okay, there's counties who have already like started the process or, or finished with the process. What did that look like? And I know that they're very different counties, different populations, different priorities, but just trying to see like how were they able to shape language? I know there was public comment about having two different, you know, legislative laws and like how those, and so how they were able to thread that needle is kind of what I would be interested in as well as we move forward.
Yeah, and we'll package all that together. I think that with that, it's going to be an issue of flexibility. How flexible does the board want to be for applications of U G A swaps? And we can bring examples of what that looks like. But bringing it all together instead of doing it piecemeal, now, once, once you receive the recommendation from the U G M., I think that's the best path forward, so we're not pinging you in different directions. Bring it all together, put it all on one page and try and figure it out.
And just so you're aware, in parallel to the updates to the countywide planning policies, if we want to achieve a final action by the board at the end of next year, we have to concurrently be processing the actual applications on our docket, the bar holdings one. So we are going to be scheduling an open house. And we'll be sure that you're aware of when the open house is and inviting all the folks that have commented so far on that project and working with the P I O.'s office to get word out. And then that'll probably be in October and then we'll be moving forward with planning commission review. So these things will be happening concurrently as you're looking at the broader policy framework, the community, our planning commission will be looking at the actual project that's on the docket.
Can you repeat what you said at the front end of that, that we have to be doing something by the end of the year?
Oh, no, if you, if, if there's any hope of us getting through the whole process for bar holdings, the actual docket project for the board to take action by the end of 2025. We have to kind of run these things concurrently.
I see, gotcha.
And that's actually a really good point because what you heard from some of the other jurisdictions, Commissioner Minter and Commissioner Mahia, was we're working on our comp plan right now also. We don't have time to take on X, Y, or Z. And they, the cities do the planning differently. We allow all comers all time, even when we're in a year for comprehensive plan updates. And so their, our process, which is standard, would be to say, we're not taking individual applications during this year while working on comprehensive plan. That would be a good place for us to potentially consider going and aligning our process with the cities because we get these applications that come in and we've got to work on them because that's our commitment, but we also have staff resources and constraints. We also need to work with the jurisdictions and then jurisdictions say, this is a year that we're working on our comp plan. This is difficult for us to add another item right now. And this is the prime example of exactly how that all is kind of coming, playing out.
Yeah, because all the, all the, it seems to me that the most recent ones that we've been chewing on were Grand Mound related, which gave us the power. But this one really connects to Tom Water. So now we've got that limitation staring us in the face because we can't do it all by ourselves. We have to work with Tom Water and if they're not staffed up or willing to put that work in, it kind of hamstrings us. And I just personally, as a board member, haven't kind of confronted that, where we had a big project that was connected to one of the municipalities and we're in the middle of a comprehensive data and, you know, so that's a new scenario for us, but it's on point.
And our goal as staff is to stay respectful and open to engagement with our jurisdictions.
Yeah, and to Tom Water's credit, their staff have been great. They have been at the table making time to try to even just develop what this process would look like, so.
Okay, any question, other questions on that? Okay, that was my update. Other Commissioner items?
Is that mine? Yep. So I, I put in kind of a, I don't know, it's kind of a policy position statement where, and I can't, you know, I'm, I'm, as one commissioner, I can't direct H R. Or direct the county manager to, to work on anything. So I brought this statement forward. I, I think that I've learned enough to, with regard to some of our H R. Policies and personnel policies to, to say that there's some work that needs to be done. And I'm looking to get support from the council to make, council commission, I'm sorry, to make, to provide direction to county manager and H R. To work with appropriate staff and external organizations to review and create a countywide ethics policy procedures for implementation by January 2025. You know, this is on second page. This would include a code of conduct for all county staff, assess and review existing policies on misconduct, retaliation and harassment to ensure that they are robust and up to date. Where lack of policy exists, we should develop it. Ethics policies aligned with public disclosure commission's rules for elected officials, review whistleblower protections, outline whistleblower protections to showcase to staff they are protected from retaliation for reporting violations, misconduct or misuse of county funds. Possibly creation of an ethics committee or an H R. Process to review all claims of misconduct and then institute mandatory training for sexual harassment, ethics policies and reporting misconduct. So I, I'm, I'm just looking for consensus amongst the commission to provide direction to the county manager to work with H R. On the things outlined in my statement.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually good with it. We need to do something, obviously. Got a problem on our hands, so.
If I could just add to the discussion, I've been made aware from the team coming in as the new county manager that we have some policies and procedures that are outdated, so we wouldn't, we'll just include updating policies and procedures so that they're the most up to date in helping serve our employees and our organization to be the best it can be.
Sounds good.
Thank you for that. Okay, I was going to say, how does it, this fit in already with kind of what we have, right? And also I know previously Romero presented, our previous county manager presented a code of conduct as well for the commission and it wasn't approved. So like, you know, is that something that we can also bring back and, and update and add some more? And I guess my third is capacity, does, where are we at capacity with H R.? Not to say that this is not important, that we do it, but where are they at on capacity and are they able to, or is this something that, you know, it's going to be directed and we're going to have to, you know, it's going to go on the bottom of the list of all the other priorities that they have as well?
Sure.
So those are.
I will, I'm going to add on, I'm going to piggyback onto that because I, I forgot about that code of conduct, but there, there was only the three of us, but the code of conduct, which was part of that policy, was the controversial part. And I never quite understood the concern. I supported it, but it didn't get passed. And there was a lot of, I remember conversations amongst the board about, you know, we don't need this, we don't, you know, this is not appropriate and, you know, there was things about, I don't know, it was just, it was much less comprehensive than what Commissioner Fornier is proposing and it was highly controversial and didn't get anywhere from amongst the board. So that's just a little history. I think it's a good idea to, for us to go through this, but the second part of what Commissioner Mahia said I, I agree with, which is just that, you know, the timing of, of when to do this work, I think it's work we probably need to be, to do. But H R., we just talked last week about H R. And how overstressed they are and I wouldn't, and we're in the middle of obviously a, a situation, a sensitive situation that's taxing H R. And our legal team, and so I, I would not want them pivoting away from that to address this, but I do, I think in good time, we should take a look at these things. So those are just kind of thoughts I had about it.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll respond to kind of, you know, the controversy with the previous code of conduct. I, you know, my issues were it didn't have any teeth. It was very much, very high level and it didn't really, you know, be nice to the chair and when the chair speaks, right? You know, you.
Important principle.
But, so like that was like my issue with it was like, well, like where's, there's no real, like, right? Like where's the, I guess, you know, like how are we going to be holding, like where's the accountability piece of that is, was my whole thing with, with the previous code of conduct? I thought it was good, right? It was a, a good beginning place, but, you know, things that I kept, kept asking was like, well, where is the, where's the other piece? I feel like there's something missing, right? And I think, I think this is a worthwhile thing to do. I, for me, is just the biggest capacity, right? Like where are we at with H R. Capacity and do they have a capacity to do? I think it's something we need to buff up on, absolutely. But, you know, I, I wouldn't want to, on the list of priorities, I guess, you know, and everything they have to do, like where would this fall? When would this be addressed?
I, I just, following up on what Commissioner Minter said, I, I think it's always worth looking at what we're doing and if we, if we're working with outdated stuff. I don't know where we set the priority, though. That's, I guess, I don't want to drop the ball on anything else, but I think it's always valuable to review, you know, and give the, give the county manager a year to review it and come back with us or something like that as to a change, but we're going to.
Maybe we just, maybe as a, as a, as a friendly amendment to that idea, like direct the county manager to work with H R. Team to kind of think through a realistic timeline for this type of, of an effort, you know, talk it through what, how much would be involved and how much time would be involved and what else is, I don't know what else is on Maria's to do list and of her team and, but anyway.
I, I think current crisis aside, this is work that needs to be done regardless. And, and, you know, in a, in a normal scenario, yeah, you know, like work on this, it's not a pressing matter. I think that there are things that are external to this that are making it a little more relevant to today. And there is likely, you know, if you, you know, if, if we discover, you know, that we've got some lack in policy or there's someplace that we haven't paid enough attention and it's, and it's kind of, and it's going to bite us, then we, we have a responsibility to, you know, show that we're going to try to fix the, those types of situations and not get the, get ourselves in them again. So I, I think, you know, where it falls on the priority list, I would leave that to staff, but I think it should be a, you know, it should, the, the commission should be signaling to the county commissioner and the public that this is a priority for us to, to shore. to the county commissioner and the public that this is a priority for us to, to shore up.
Commissioners, if I may, I believe much of what you covered, Commissioner Fornier, is a priority for any organization. On the code of conduct, for example, for all staff, that's something that organically is already making its way through with Rob and with Josh stepping up as new assistant county manager, partly because department heads are wanting this for their teams. And so rather than us look at having three separate ones at this point, they've already started to work on how do we bring that together? And so, yes, I think we can work this through from a county management leadership team and H R. But I think things like code of conduct and these are fundamental foundational documents that you don't have to recreate the will and be happy to come back with a prioritization. But it would be my motivation to get these documents established because I believe it begins to communicate to all our employees, what is our values as an organization? What, what do we hold to be important? And then with those documents, we can begin to train, which is something I've already started to talk to Maria and Amy about. How do we conduct training with our employees and what's the tone and environment, culture we're setting in that? So I think that our team would be very supportive of taking this on, working with Maria and Commissioner Mahia being very sensitive to where H R. Is at and what additional resources. These are tasks that may take a committee forum to come together and knock them out. And so, you know, we'll come up with an approach to try to address this if that's the commissioner's desire.
Okay.
More to come by the end of the week, probably.
Five thumbs on that. Thank you, county manager.
Thank you.
The other commissioner items? Okay, it's eleven thirty-two. Our turn.